So, resolution number forty-four dash twenty-twenty-one adopting local law zero-one of two thousand twenty-one adding chapter one hundred short-term rentals. So, I'll make a motion to adopt local law zero-one of two thousand twenty-one.
I will second that.
Whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees is caused to be prepared a draft of the local law adding to the Village Code chapter one hundred short-term rentals and whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees have duly noticed public hearings on the draft local law on May sixth, two thousand twenty-one, July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, and whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees has complied with the requirements of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, as it applies to the adoption of the draft local law. Now therefore be resolved that local law number one of two thousand twenty-one is hereby adopted and the village clerk is authorized and directed to take all the actions necessary to complete the local law adoption procedure including filing said local law with the New York State Office of the Secretary of State.
Trustee Early.
I have a question. We've amended what was discussed at the public hearing on Tuesday. Do we need to note that in this resolution?
No.
Okay, then I vote yes. Are we not, we're not having discussion?
So, roll. Is it discussion? I don't know.
It was, the motion was made and seconded, but no call for discussion.
Yeah, not usually on a, not usually on a resolution.
Okay, go ahead.
Trustee Early.
I second that.
Trustee Foley.
No.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Woods.
No.
Mayor Morandi.
Yes.
So, I have to ask the objections that you have. I actually had a statement which I'd like to read if I may. Have you recognized, Mr. Mayor?
You know, I just, here's a statement I'd like to make. It's just that, we just went through this, we got to public hearings, went through savings, we've had emails and nobody opposes us and now on the day we're voting for it, we're going to oppose it. Thank you.
We haven't taken a question.
Yes, make a statement for your campaign.
Thank you for the floor, Mr. Mayor.
It's incorporating commercial uses into residential spaces, residential neighborhood is tricky because we want hosts to make money, but if it's overdone, neighborhoods lose cohesion and long-term leases become difficult, which means Cold Spring slowly dies as a community. I think that we've tried to extract the best of what we've read and adapt what we can to meet the needs of our village specifically. What's put forward now is a starting point. It's not perfect, legislation rarely is, but it goes a long way toward regulating the operation of STRs in the village. We'll learn from it as it is applied, data is collected, and fine-tune the law with later modifications. The Village Board, in my view, has been responsive to concerns about the impacts of short-term rentals in neighborhoods. The Board has been responsive to feedback given by operators. I feel good about both of those things. And I just want to state a few things for the record. I support tight limitations on unhosted STRs, including the total number allowed to operate, a lottery selection of permits, and a limited, limit on the number of nights they can be rented per year. These are the types of short-term rentals that are the source of most complaints and we must limit their proliferation. I support strict limitations on LLCs and operating properties as STRs. We can't have our residential housing completely given over, tourist accommodation as has happened in some tourist towns. I support inspections and permitting one term, excuse me, I support inspections and permitting one-time short-term rentals. Renters will be safe and Cold Spring families can earn money. I'm glad we modified the code to create two opportunities for families to get those permits. I'm comfortable with a high fee structure for violations. Our expectations for good management of these businesses are very high, as are our expectations for the respectful behavior of guests. However, I believe the code meets more flexibility with hosted short-term rentals. In hosted rentals, property owners are on-site during the rental and are directly accountable to their neighbors. They have a stake in protecting neighborhood character for themselves as well as for those around them. It behooves them to make sure that their guests will be well-behaved and respectful. They've got their neighbors to face every day. As we see working successfully in Rhinebeck, I would have liked to have seen no limitation on the number of hosted STRs and no limit on the number of nights they could be rented. And given the STRs bring more tourists, I would have liked to have seen a tourism impact fee imposed on all short-term rentals to provide a new revenue stream for the village so that residents and the village could find an opportunity to participate in the tourism economy. So while I believe the code is a step in the right direction and I support it in principle, I have voted no on the current iteration.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kathleen. Twips, can you explain your note?
Sure, I can explain my note. Pretty simple. I agree that I think the, the current iteration has taken into account a lot of the concerns that people have brought up, at least in the two public hearings that I've been a part of. The work that you've done is amazing and it's very difficult to come up with something that everyone will be happy with. So, that being said, the thing that sticks in my head is the repeated concept and comment about the fact that there was no process like a, like the parking committee. There was no committee for people to work on this together, both, from both sides. And I think that that process could make this even better. So, my concern is that people feel like there wasn't enough, not that there wasn't enough public process, but that there wasn't enough time for them to, to work like a committee would, like the parking committee did, or is currently. So, I think for that reason, I feel that it could be, this could be better, it could be improved, and I think people working together on a committee could do that.
Thank you.
So, I'll make my, my, my statement on the, on my yes vote. I've, I've, I don't know how much time I've put in this, it's years and years, it seems, and I've looked through, I don't know how many countless other codes all over the country and I think in other, other, other parts of the world also, mostly people that are experiencing what we do as tourism, you know, with tourism. And there's, there's basically not a lot of, there's not a lot of questions that come up or there's not, there's a control of the number and how you do that and, and that's one of the main questions. And everything we did, I think we took into account, and I know everything that I did was looking to make rentals as, for everyone as much as possible. But, but what we're trying to do and the reason for this law is to stop the proliferation of short-term rentals so that more and more and more people don't say that I need this to subsidize my lifestyle or my, you know, my livelihood, however they want to, want to phrase that. And in order to do that, you have to make restrictions. And in order to make restrictions, there are people that are not going to be happy. People that have three apartments in their house that now can rent them, won't be able to. They're not going to be happy because if you look at how much money can they can brought in, can be brought in, it's a commercial enterprise. And, and people, as this, as the one woman stated at our last meeting, they, they actually wanted to come into and live in residential areas and they did not want a commercial area. And now, there's a possibility, or there was before this law and I'm sure will be sued and the next administration, whoever that might be, might turn it over, whatever, but for now, for a few months or whatever, we, there will be restrictions and you won't have to worry about having three rentals surrounding you. You won't have to worry about everybody being able to have rent one room out and people coming in and out with, you know, limits to how many nights or how many, how many people can be in rooms. Every detail went over it and using all the other short-term rental laws that are out there, that's how this was, this was crafted. And it was crafted, you know, understanding that some people definitely won't be happy, as with everything, just like the parking committee. And we have, and you know, and everybody was involved in that, it wasn't just me, it was the five, the five, three of us that are here now, or, well, actually the five of us, you know, had some input and, and the other boards before that had more input, the last board with Lynn and Steve on it. And so, you know, I know the, the people that have come here, you know, that have, you know, come to the hearings, mostly are the ones who object to it, a few that didn't. And they want to have a committee because they're not happy with what this is and they want more. They want to have what they have now. And what they have now is counter to what the reason for this law is, control over short-term rentals in our village. So it doesn't turn into, you know, other areas like, I understand Florence where it's all short-term rentals. Florence, Italy that is. And so, I, I just think that, you know, what we've done and the amount of time that we've put into this and the amount of consideration we put into this, the changes that we did make make it more easy for people and I, I think it's a good law and I'm sure there will be some corrections needed. Maybe we'll find out there's not as many short-term rentals as there are, maybe we'll find out that right now there's like ten percent or more in our village. And then you might ask yourself, well, is that what you want? And, and if we restrict them, how do we cut, cut that down to seven? Or then there's people that aren't going to be happy and their livelihood depends on, and they can't live in their houses anymore and they're going to leave and everything else that's been said, you know, like that we're punishing people because we're not letting them break the law and have short-term rentals or a business, because it's a business. And that's the bottom line, which nobody wants to do. It's a business that people are now running so that they have extra money to do what they want. And that's, that's great, but it's not, it's not in a commercial or business district, it's in a residential district. So, I'd like to thank all the people that have worked on this and all the countless hours that have gone into this. And I'm totally disappointed that, that these oppositions weren't brought up in our prior, prior meetings where they easily could have been when we were going through every one of these and, and no one, and, and people did not bring them up, either Trustee Foley or Trustee Wood.
That's not correct, Dave.
You did, they did not, you did not bring these up and then tonight you oppose it. If it was brought up, maybe there could have been more discussion at least, but that wasn't possible.
It was, my issues I did raise. I specifically raised the tourist. You weren't, you weren't on the call where I raised the tourist impact fee. It was Fran and Marie and me. I raised it, you were traveling. So, don't say I didn't raise it. I did. I did not have the vote and, and it's fine. I didn't have the vote. Tonight, I don't have the vote, but I, I, I am an individual, I am one member of five who can vote her conscience. I voted my conscience on this one.
Well, I would just like to say that as the mayor, I wish that somebody had made you inform me of this, which I wasn't because I wasn't in on the call, which everyone else seems that problem is they're not all included and everything, so, but as a mayor, I think that I might need to know that and when we're having our discussions, it might have been good to know that. When we had discussions after the, after public hearings, I think that that's the time we should said, I'm not for this if this is, if this is going to be in it. That's how it's done at a more national level.
I did raise it. I did raise it.
You raised that and said you were not going to vote on this if that was in it.
I raised Tuesday night the things that I still had concerns over. When you wouldn't, you didn't ask for a vote.
Saying you're concerned, saying you're concerned is saying I wouldn't vote on that are two different things.
Sometimes, sometimes, sometimes there's disagreement on board and that you passed without the votes.
I understand that there's a disagreement on a board and I understand how votes go. I also understand that usually, and if you look at a national level, which I know you like to and always do, on a national level, it's like, this isn't going to work because we're not going to vote for us, we don't have the votes. And then, people come to a consensus. That didn't happen here because you had concerns, which didn't mean to me that you're not going to vote on this or that if that's involved, included in it, that there was not going to be a vote on it. That's what we're saying.
I feel confident, I feel confident that via our Google document, I made comments, my comments were discussed and declined. That's fine. The majority declined them, that's no problem. You can absolutely do that. I raised comments after I felt that the discussion on Tuesday evening should have happened when the public was in the room. The public left. I raised the concerns that I had, the remaining concerns that I had. You all discussed them and dismissed them. That's fine. It is, this is not a matter of me not making opinions clear, Dave. I'm a communicator.
Okay. Yes, you are.
But that doesn't mean.
That's good for you, that's, that's your perspective of things.
But that doesn't, we have to agree.
Which isn't, that doesn't, I don't care if we agree, actually. I would just like to know if you weren't going to vote on it, I think that should have been clear and that wasn't. When you say you have a concern or, you know, I don't know if I like that, that, that part there is kind of concerns me. Does that mean we're not going to vote on it or, you know, because that to me isn't how it works and I, and I definitely would have acted differently. I had no idea that the way you guys are going to vote tonight and.
I'm sorry that you weren't aware.
Yeah? I'm sure you're not, but that said, does Fran or Marie, would you like to make any statement? Okay.
I just wanted, just one statement. As we sat and listened to all these public hearings, I was very much aware of the number of people who were in the room who were people who had short-term rentals versus the number of people who are residents of this village. And I kept thinking about eighteen-hundred people in the village, twelve people in the room or twelve people who signed letters. Yes, they're vocal and yes, a lot of other people didn't show up until the last meeting, but, but you know, I'm always aware of the fact that twelve people is nowhere a majority. And they said what they needed to say and I know why they were here, or even if there were fifteen, even if there were thirty of them. But I'm conscious of the fact that there's a large number of people in this village who moved in here for certain reasons. And as I walked around the village many times as I campaigned and as I was getting signatures, these are the people who would stop me, you know, and talk to me for ten, fifteen, twenty minutes about things like this. Some who showed up the other night, some who I've spoken to or I've seen other letters from. So those are the people that I'm aware of and I think what we did for them in this is the right thing to do.
Okay, so, let's move ahead here. Resolution number forty-five dash twenty-twenty-one adopting local law sixteen of two thousand twenty-one amending chapters one thirty-four zoning. I'll make a motion to adopt local law sixteen of two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Following, whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees is caused to be prepared a draft of the local law to amend chapter one thirty-four zoning and whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees have duly noticed public hearings on the draft local law on May sixth, two thousand twenty-one and July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, and whereas the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees has complied with the requirements of the State Environmental Quality Act, SECR, as it applies to the adoption of draft local law, now therefore be it resolved that local law number sixteen of two thousand twenty is hereby adopted and the village clerk is authorized and directed to take all of the actions necessary to complete the local law adoption procedure including filing said local law with the New York State Office of the Secretary of State.
Trustee Early.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
No.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Woods.
No.
Mayor Morandi.
Aye.
This is on the old one thirty-four, right?
Right.
Correct.
And your objection to one thirty-four?
Well, it, to me, it makes sense that if I were not supporting the law that is driving those changes, I wouldn't support the changes.
What is, what these changes do is they enable.
It permits short-term rentals in R-one district and B-one district and prohibits them in B-three, B-four, B-four-A.
Correct.
I think it's, it's, yes, I agree with you. It's in, it's enabling, yeah, but it's enabling having a short-term rental law, not necessarily enabling the elements with which you.
Yes, you are correct. I was, that was, I'm sorry, I made a mistake.
No.
No, but you're right, you're right. I'm acknowledging that you're right.
So, do you want to stay with a no?
No, I'd like to, if I can modify my vote, I would like to switch to yes.
Okay.
Good.
And Twips, your reason?
It was similar to Kathleen's. I under, I understood it as it was enabling the previous. So, if it's, if it's not, then I would change my vote as well.
Okay.
As long as I under.
So, one thirty-four.
I think I understand. Okay. The change.
Jeff.
Jeff. After your discussion, we'll have, I'll call for a new roll, roll call vote.
Okay, sounds good.
So, Twips.
Yes.
The chapter one thirty-four on the Google, which you've seen.
Yes.
What it does is it permits short-term rentals in R-one and B-one, prohibits them in R-three, B-four, B-two, B-four, B-four-A, and I-one, I-two, and the historic-dash-hotel-dash-designated district. Without doing that, no short-term rentals. The only short-term rentals that are permitted in the village are short-term rentals which exist on, that have frontage on state roads.
Right.
Nine-D and three-oh-one to the red light. So it eliminates most of the village.
And so, I can tell, I, Fran and I spoke about this this afternoon and.
This isn't the, Kathleen, this isn't, this is the old one thirty-four.
Oh, yes, correct, correct, correct.
So, the other one, the other one.
Yeah, no, correct.
So, this is the old one thirty-four that has nothing to do with the other one.
And I understand what Marie has explained and I agree.
Okay. New roll call vote. Trustee Early.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Morandi.
Yes.
Thank you.
Jeff, we have to do for both these chapters what we're doing for the eleven chapters.
Yes.
Try to get that to you by next week.
Thanks for watching.
Next, adoption of the, adopt the master fee schedule. We have a master fee schedule by two thousand twenty-one.
Yes. Now, the reason for this is that we recently adopted eleven chapters and in those eleven chapters, the current eleven chapters, not the ones that were adopted, there were fees stated in those chapters. With the new adopted chapters, we removed the fees from the old chapters and referred to the master fee schedule. So, in the master fee schedule, the changes include under demolition, it's not, it's not demolishing, but we've added temporary certificate of occupancy, seventy-five dollars, reinspection, if the original building plan is changed, a hundred dollars. We have deleted, so if you go to licensing, we deleted parking and pedaling, circuses, menageries, blah, 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 blah. Added a license to solicit, a license to solicit for an organization with a principal office in Cold Spring. And, and those are the changes. So, a bunch of deletions and one, two additions. You've got some, some more read at the bottom, Marie.
Pardon me?
Deleted shopping carts. Yeah, yes, that's wrong. It's correct that we want to, but we can't delete it yet because we haven't changed chapter one oh.
Right, okay, I don't remember that is. I was at one oh-one.
Something like that. That is projected for three or four, public hearing three or four. The other change is under residential parking permit, which is the last page there. The residential parking permit west of Metro North remains at three dollars, but the qualification west of Metro North has been added. A new line has been added. Residential parking permit east of Metro North for ten dollars a year and a replacement permit for that is five dollars. So if you lose your permit, it's going to cost you five dollars to get a new one. So those are the changes. There will be more changes to the master fee schedule as we go through.
After each set more, yes.
Okay. So, I, I've taken up some time, but I wanted people to understand what they were voting on.
So, I'd like to make a motion.
So, I'll make a motion to adopt a master fee schedule as distributed.
Second.
Discussion?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is a code update review on chapter one thirty-four.
Our favorite chapter. So, this is the big one thirty-four. Not the little one thirty-four that one.
Right, 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 understood.
And in the, in the Google docs. It's one thirty-four zoning, seven twenty-five, twenty. So the changes to this. The first change is the date in the appendix A zoning map, this is in the index. I will update that to whatever the date is for when chapter one thirty-four is approved. It currently shows as twenty, twenty oh-eight, so that has to be corrected. And it's fairly early in the chapter. This is. One thirty-four dash one, E, to recognize that while the Village of Cold Spring is primarily a residential community, provision must, also must be made for business and industry. The point here is that we're deleting the, the industrial zones, I-one and I-two. So my, my thinking was that we should probably not include end industry. And I think, Fran, you had made some recommended wording changes. Right, I recommend instead of saying end industry, say business, parks and recreation and mixed use, which are the other zones that we have.
Yeah, I think that's good. And I, I agree with that.
Then, the next one is bed and breakfast. This one, we have, we've had some confusion on bed and breakfast. The definition is correct. It's a dwelling owner occupied and licensed by New York State with a minimum number of guest rooms, three, pay transient accommodation, so separate cleaning facilities, maximum stay is thirty, continuous stays or less. We had, currently, if you read through the code, it is permitted in R-one, R-three and B-one with a special use permit. That's the current wording. This wording, the version only allows it in R-three. And we have been talking about, it's a, should be a permitted use in B-one. So, what I, I would recommend we do is, and as it turns out, there are multiple places in the chapter that talk about BNBs and what's permitted and not permitted, per district, blah, 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 with or without a special use permit. So my recommendation is that BNBs be permitted in the B-one district. And the question for the board is, do you want to require a special use permit or an as-of-right permitted use? Can you go through the detail, sorry, the difference? Between the two? If it's as-of-right, which it would be listed under permitted uses in B-one, if it's there, someone can go ahead and do that. They do not need permission from the village to do that.
And permission would, would be from the planning board?
No, it's as-of-right, so you can do it.
Okay.
You still have to get New York State license, but the village doesn't interfere in that. A special use permit would be sought, if we want to make it as a special use permit and not as-of-right, the applicant who wanted to have a BNB in a, in a B-one district would have to apply to the planning board for the special use permit. And the planning board would take into account, whatever it is that the planning board takes into account, which is parking, whether or not the use is consistent with, I'm not going to say the neighborhood, but is consistent with adjoining properties. They might look for the ability to exit the building in case of a fire, they would look for safety, et cetera. So a special use permit includes additional review by the planning board where as-of-right does not include that.
In the same way that when Silver Spoon was converted to a BNB, those questions were raised.
Yes.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Special use. I would go with special use also. Now, we're just talking about the B-one district, right? That's correct. Because it would not be allowed in an R-one.
Right.
Or an R, now, currently it is allowed in R-three. Do we want to keep it in an R-three?
I'm having a hard time imagining what configuration in an R-three would, would be a BNB in the hotel-like sense.
The Campbell estate.
Oh, right, of course.
Yeah, that can be grand, that, that, we could delete it from R-one. You're absolutely right. If I, well, if I think about the R-threes, where are, where are there R-threes? We've got Springbrough, we've got Forge Gate. You might think of Butterfield as an R-three-like, but it's.
Yes, right.
The other R, there's an R-three property on Lock Street.
So there is.
And that could. And that could, but if we allow it in an R three, it opens it up to all R threes, all R three districts, of which, Spring Brook, Forge Gate.
Right, right.
Rock Street, I'd have to look, Campbell Estate, I'd have to look to see if there are any others, but I, I think there is a sliver of a piece of property, another piece of property on Rock Street, which with the new zoning map should be eliminated, it should be all R one. But that's the, the other location that I can think of for an R, a potential R three.
So if I were someone who wanted to open a B and B, say, at Forge Gate?
Yes.
I would have to recon, I would have to own a condo and reconfigure the condo to allow multiple guest rooms in that space, yeah.
Own multiple condos.
Or own multiple condos.
Yeah.
Would I be naive to think that the condo associations would have their own rulings on this, so even if we said yea, they would probably make their own decision then, you know? I mean, I don't mind doing it in an R three.
But the only property that I can think of currently, with current zoning and with proposed, that is R three that is not a condo, is Rock Street. At Rock Street and the Campbell Estate, which currently has a B and B.
So, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm sort of, I'm thinking that the, the condo associations will sort of protect themselves.
Maybe.
And that, that could be naive. And the other properties, I think, should be allowed to have a B and B, you know, the Campbell Estate and the Rock Street.
Okay.
So I would say yes for their, for the.
For R three.
R three.
Okay. I would advocate with a special permit, in the same way that it's in B one.
Yeah, I like the special use permit. Special use permit for B one and R three. It's gonna take me a little bit of time to go through the code to make all those changes, but I will do that. Next. That's really far. One thirty-four dash four zoning maps, I'm gonna change the date on that, so I, don't, don't accept it, I'll, I'll just, at some point, I'll, it's a, um, I'll page.
Fourteen, listing of districts.
In, right, one thirty, one thirty-four seven, is that where I meant?
Okay, one thirty-four three.
Three, three.
You just, you just deleted the MU district renamed from the I one.
I'm sorry, I did something?
You deleted, um, next to the MU district.
The parenthetical comment there.
Renamed from I one, you deleted that, so I should.
Oh, yeah, yes, I, I thought that was extraneous, and it shouldn't have been there. I mean, one thirty-four seven, what is not identified in here as a permitted use is an accessory apartment. I, I don't know how I left it out. So, in an R one, a person can create an accessory apartment in their building. And.
But you have.
The requirements for accessory apartments are identified in one thirty-four seventeen M, and lengthed.
My recollection is that the previous iteration of the board had extensive conversations on, on that decision.
Yeah, yes, please. Idea was, uh, the idea was to allow it, but to restrict it to the primary structure, not to allow it in an accessory building. Other things, you cannot have multiple entrances into the building from the front facade. You can go into the building and into a foyer where you can go upstairs, first floor, you can have a side entrance, but the primary facade would not, was not going to be permitted to be modified. I don't remember if I have any comments.
And that's only for, uh, a, apartment use, not for home office, or that's the only piece here?
Home, home office is different, right, right. So, thank you, Fran, I see you've approved that.
I got grammatical in the next couple, um, and I'm not sure that it will.
So, the next one, oh, okay, the next one, this one is, um...
You're computing the front yard setback, the presence of entries in porticoes.
It says, currently, currently now says shall, which means must, option, right?
Yes.
And I said may.
I'm fine with that.
Because can, I think, is the ability to, with may is, you can, you might be able to do it, and I could be.
I think that's better.
My grammar, my grammar has probably been overwritten by new forms of grammar. I think I did that in a couple of places.
That's actually in two places. Yeah, you got the second one. Great, thank you. So, in one thirty-four nine B, I will go back, this is one of the places, I've gotta go back and, and work through B and B, so if you don't mind, we can skip this tonight, and I'll take care of it, and you'll see notes. Now, the next one in B, um, you see here parentheses three for regulations for short rentals. What I've gotta do is I've gotta take the wording from chapter one thirty-four that we just approved earlier, and get that wording in this one thirty-four. So there's gonna be some modifications that will be required. I will work on that, and, and you'll see changes come along.
The, the comments against B one, I'm just gonna approve.
Which, which one are you?
I'm right, uh, one thirty-four nine B one, it just says, I believe, want to permit B and Bs in B one with special use and.
I, I'm sorry, Fran, I, I.
I'm sorry, I'm, this is my voice. One thirty-four nine.
Yeah.
B, uses, uses permitted, um, it was highlighted, I believe, we want to permit.
Right, that's what I was, what I was talking about. B three, I'm gonna have to come back and do something about that.
So B one is okay to approve, right?
I don't know, I'm gonna have to come back.
Okay.
And, and look at that. And nine, I'm gonna have to come back and look at that. And C two, I'm gonna have to come back and look at that.
That needs to be with, are, are allowed with special apartment, right?
This is C two.
Uh-huh. Based on the conversation I just had, yeah.
Yes. Let's see, where's the next change? On one thirty-four eleven, regulations for B three designated retail financial professional district. A, uh, site, site plan review and approval in each case where a building or alteration convert. You'll see in the fourth line, it says proposed building or reuse. If there is a change, in each case where a building or alteration or conversions proposed, a site plan shall be submitted to, who shall refer the site plan of the proposed building or reuse to the planning board. I, I'm assuming that's acceptable.
That's fine.
Thanks, Fran. And, whoops. I hit this chapter. Trying to get.
What chapter?
Okay, right, on one thirty-four thirteen, parks and recreation, I need collected to include the identification of the Howden Ballfields, west of Morris Avenue, as being part of the Parks and Recreation District. So the Parks and Recreation District, Waterfront Park, Dockside Park, Mayor's Park, Ronald McCampell Todd Park, the Howden Ballfields, West Point Foundry Preserve, Foundry Dock Park, the Boat Club, the Chapel Restoration, and, um, the, from the Hudson River to Market Street, that whole piece of property, that's all PR, PR one. So, if everybody's okay with that.
Now, may I ask you a question? About the Howden piece?
Yeah.
So, there are ballfields across that are on the school property. They own the property where the soft, softball and baseball fields are. Why is it not zoned school in the way that the fields are across the street?
Fields crosses, so. So, um, currently, Howden is zoned R one.
Okay, because it's, and has a right use to have a school, yeah.
Yes, so it's all R one. The property from west of Morris Avenue, there, it's only two flat pieces. And that's the one where the girls softball diamond is, and the one below where the little leap diamond. Everything else is a steep slope. And they, I believe they go all the way down to Forge, to Spring Brook. It seems like those two fields will be most likely, um, Parks and Recreation, the one, and that's all one tax lot I do. The one above it is all tax, one tax lot I do.
I see.
Um, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure that includes the parking lot, the very steep hill, um, I believe it also includes, I have to check on that.
So if Howden, the, the question that comes to mind is that if Howden, I mean, it's unlikely, if they were decided to, they were decided they wanted to expand a building there, and it were park instead of R one as the rest of their parcel is, would that be?
They would have to apply for a, a variance. What I think is more likely is Howden to say, we have our space, and we need to move to their own pilots.
That's the only, that's the only direction they have to go, really, now that they're bound on the other side.
Yeah, regardless of what we do with, with, with the ballfields, I think, it, it seems to me that it would not be correct to have a school on both sides of the state highway, and, um, the students can be going back and forth, but.
Well, so at the time, if that proposal were to ever come forward, that would then be a question of variance.
Yes.
Got it, thank you for explaining.
And I, I would suspect that Howden would claim that, I didn't tell me that, that.
Sure, understood. Probably benefit.
So... The next one is, oh, this one is really difficult. We're in one thirty-four fifteen, which is senior citizens and housing, housing, it's Chestnut Ridge. Currently, in the current code, there are two places where the minimum and natural requirements for Chestnut Ridge are found. One is in one thirty-four fifteen, and the other is in, I think I noted it here, uh, it was in the email that I sent to you, uh, one thirty-four seventeen M. So, if you look at one thirty-four fifteen and one thirty-four seventeen M, they conflict in terms of the minimum property size, the front yard setback, the side yard setback, the rear yard setback, they are totally in conflict with one another. One thirty-four fifteen is the larger, um, is the requirement for the larger piece of property, three acres. And if I then go from there, a three acre lot has a lot width of eighty feet, that makes no sense, with three acres, eighty feet wide, and one hundred feet deep. Just makes no sense at all, that, that the minimum size you would have to have is three acres, um, where the lottery per dwelling unit is twenty-three hundred square feet per dwelling unit. What I recommend we do here, this, this update didn't cause the problem, the problem is in the current code. What I recommend we do is go with the minimum requirements from one thirty-four fifteen and ignore the minimum, minimum requirements in one thirty-four seventeen. What, if you want, I can send you an email that identifies what the two, what the two different sets of requirements are. If you will not find one thirty-four seventeen in this, in this chapter, because it's been deleted.
It's, it's near the one. Yeah, if you, if.
That we have.
I'm sorry.
Okay, send out, okay, send out, one thirty-four fifteen and seventeen. I tried to explain it, explain it in my email, uh, obviously it's into a, a.
Sorry.
All right. And, and this continues with the maximum length of the building, blah, 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 blah. So I'll, I'll look on that and have something to you in the next couple of days. Now, notice that in many cases, I replace residence with dwelling, and there were a number of instances of single family, which is not a district, we have a one-family district, so I changed single family to one-family, um, in multiple places, and changed residence to dwelling. So if everyone is okay with that, maybe Fran can just go through it.
Sure.
And massively approve those.
Okay.
We're getting halfway through there. That's a good news. We're gonna get to parking numbers in a minute. Okay, one, one, single one. Single one. Okay, in, um, I think it's one thirty-four sixteen or seventeen, municipal and governmental uses by, I'm on page, uh, I'm on page sixty-seven. All municipal and governmental uses by, out here by the radio, as for, in each and every district, and not subject to zoning board of appeals, planning board, or historic district review board approvals. The change here is the addition of historic district review board. It seemed to be logically that if the ZBA and the planning board don't have just approval rights, the historic district review board shouldn't either.
Is it, um, talk about just municipal buildings in the village, or, for example, Phillips Town within the town hall, do you remember?
I, I'm only talking about, um... Fair enough, Fran, what would you like to, um, how would you like to change? Do you think it should be Phillips Town buildings as well? Because right now it's Village of.
What about, I mean, this is standard stuff across municipalities, that municipalities are excluded, could you? Could you, could you just take out the reference to Village of Cold Spring, because, well, what other municipality would there be here, right? So I guess it would make sense to just add town.
No, no, Phillips Town, yes.
Let me try something, state consumers, build structure.
Well, but then, if it's state funding, then it does kick into.
Does it say funding?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just uses.
Let's leave it with just the village at this point, because I think we're gonna open up.
We can add the town of Phillips Town if you think.
Well, what, what parcel do they have other than town hall? Do they have any parcels in the village other than town hall?
Yes, they have, um, they have the, the building between the town hall and the American Legion, the, um.
Oh, right, the, the Dahlia House. But that's part of that complex, separate parcel.
They, they are building, well, that's out of, I was gonna say, building a new highway, but that's out of our jurisdiction. You know, let's leave it like this, and then they become an ass, they asked last time, and it was fine.
Okay, so, good. Did that change?
Oh, good.
Is there, is there, um... I would, I would love for there to be consultation with boards, that they don't, not approval, but consultation. And I don't, I don't know if that's something that model code would, model state code would allow us to add in our code.
So this is, um, what municipal and governmental uses, so it's uses of land and or building. I, I don't think consultation.
It's only the permitted, it's only the permitted portion that we're addressing right here, understood.
Then, in the parking table. I need to change.
Home professional office.
Home occupation or home professional office, I added home there.
Which just flows from the definition.
Yes, exactly, it's consistent with the definitions. Whoops. Okay, um, here, there was a, let me get the easy one out, out of the way first, N. There was a section on front lawn dumpsters in this chapter.
Right.
And it talked about where you could put a front. And it talked about where you could put a front lawn dumpster or whatever. And what I'm saying here is see chapter forty-eight, which is where all dumpsters are identified. And just get rid of it. Have it only in one place.
That makes sense.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now waiver of parking requirements.
When we did this, um, excuse me, excuse me for jumping in.
I thought we resolved.
When we did this, um, I had added D fees collected in lieu of parking used by the going to offset expenses related to parking control. I know, Marie, you said you don't think it's true. And I thought it was the discussion we had had and what we had thought of, decided on.
I thought so too, Fran.
And so we were going to, that was, that was my understanding of.
So, so right now waiver, the fees in lieu, just go into the general fund.
Right. And, and I, uh, and I know Michelle has said she doesn't keep control of it. Um, and this doesn't necessarily mean it has to, um.
What she would have to do is she would have to set a, a separate income line for fees in lieu and she would have to set up a separate payment line.
Do, would it be, would it suffice to just have a spreadsheet at the end of the year that said this is how much we got for parking?
Not if you put it in this way.
From fees in lieu?
No, no.
Okay.
This is you're gonna account for.
Well, I think that you should be accounting for it. If you're asking people to make payments in lieu of parking, the money you're collecting from them should be spent on parking, on parking.
Like, like this is, this is a discussion we need to have with Michelle.
Yeah, so the, the first question, do we want to retain fees in lieu? Let's say yes or no.
I, I thought we resolved that we do if we, if we make clear.
Now, the next question is, what do you do with that money and how do you account for it?
And that's Michelle's question.
And right now it just goes into the general fund. And if you wanted to, um, change the way it's accounted for, you would need an expense line against that income line. And I don't know whether or not she can do that. And to be perfectly honest, the fees in lieu that have been collected thus far, thus far. Pacman, Hugh.
And, and because the mechanism.
Once a year maybe or something like that for, depending on who's.
What would you give, what would you use, three hundred, five hundred? It's because payments in lieu of parking are normally used in new construction in urban areas and suburban areas. I don't think it makes sense, I don't think it makes sense in the context in which it's applied.
So, so.
I mean, I would advocate for taking it out.
Back for the first question, should we leave it in? You would take, say take it out. What do we do when a proposal comes in front of one of the boards to add a, um, a, a, what would, what would I call it? An, uh, an office, a set of offices to a building on Main Street? Where the set of offices contain fifteen people or twenty people or thirty people.
So currently, currently what is the requirement for that? Uh, one for each hundred fifty square feet?
Per person. Per, per, one hundred and fifty square feet per parking space.
Right.
And let's say it ends up being thirty parking spaces on Main Street.
What if you were to change, because I think part of it is, part of it that makes it hard for people to understand is the language, which is payment in lieu as if you're buying out of.
I understand.
Right? So what if you were to say a parking impact fee rather than parking in lieu of, does that help?
We can words that, I mean, just what do we do?
Okay.
With, uh, a proposal to put in an office containing twenty-five, thirty people on Main Street?
Well, we don't have, we don't have space. We don't have additional, and not, not that we, you can't have an office, but we don't have additional linear footage for parking.
Right, because there's nothing in our code.
But, yeah, I mean, so what do you do? You tell them, anybody who.
Right, so, so, so then you get into questions of is it, is it transit oriented, right? Are the people who are gonna be using your, your office taking the train? Are they driving? I mean, we don't have additional square, square footage to offer for parking.
So, so do you deny them the ability to open their business on Main Street?
No.
What do you do? Well, so what do you do?
I mean, this, this is one of the things that I think, that I think as we continue the discussion about parking, needs to be thought about.
So Main Street parking has, let me say, ninety spaces on it. And this, um, and this buzzer will take up thirty of the spaces.
So if Main Street is metered for X, right?
Uh, on, on, only on weekends.
So at that time, part of the planning, part of the site review, site, site plan review process would be looking at those impacts, right?
Can't fit one, actually.
So I think what you're suggesting is that you want to, I think, you, you're suggesting leave the in lieu so that there is an option? I mean, it doesn't actually, even if they paid and they paid at the rate, it doesn't solve the parking problem.
It's up to the village court to accept that, that proposal. And the village court, well, you could say, no. This is not an acceptable use of that space on Main Street. Sorry. Anyway, I, I got off on a tangent.
Um, I, I would say leave it in for the time being because we have, you know, this discussion has gone back and forth in original. I was like, what are we doing with this? This is crazy. But, you know, if nothing else, I don't know, it's not gonna deter somebody. But I think it's just an awareness of the fact that there's no.
Well, I mean, if someone's buying a building on Main Street, they're not gonna be unaware that there is no parking area, right?
I wouldn't say that.
If you're, if they're putting in a commercial, in Marie's scenario, commercial use with thirty people.
I'd be surprised.
Yep.
Um, so, so Fran, you, do you still would like to talk to Michelle to have her view on how she could manage it if it were to leave it?
Jeff, what are your thoughts on that? Because you're.
Well, if it's.
I'm sorry for jumping into Jeff's.
If you're asking about accounting for it, I think it makes sense. It's not a big deal to create a new expense and revenue lines, you know, to add new, new codes.
But if, if what you get is fifteen hundred dollars a year, what do you do with it?
That's a separate question. Setting it up, the, 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 the mechanics of it's easy.
So it might go toward things like signage in parking areas. It's like a fund that you pull from when you need, when you need to address signage. You asked for an example, that's what I'm trying to think of.
So.
Nico, Nico, um.
Or Nico, right?
Related to parking control.
Nico, um, he's a cop.
He's on the cop law.
But still, he's basically related to parking control, isn't he?
Um, you could say.
And I don't see why we can't put some of it towards the police department.
Sure, okay, so.
It's where it goes anyway. We're going to a general fund that's very small, but that's where the money's coming from. I mean, I don't know, do we?
I think what's missing is the accounting. What's missing is the accounting that shows some, that's when I buy, when I as a business owner buy out of my spaces, my money is getting used for the thing that the village says it's being used for.
The accounting part is that, we account postage, we get, you know, we get down to this fifty-one cent stamp level accounting and assigning that to departmentally. So accounting for parking and parking expenses should not be.
That's what I think too.
An issue.
Yeah.
If, if that's the way the board wants to go, it's not, if we create it, we need to account for the funds, it can be done.
It'd be interesting to see how much, I mean, typically, I mean, other than maybe a big business that may decide to move in, we typically don't get this more than once, twice a year maybe. Once a year, depending on how often a new business moves in or.
Well, I guess if we were accounting for it, we would know.
Right. Well, Jimmy put in the uptown, we know. It, it comes to the village board for approval. So somebody's gonna check in, Michelle?
Well, what's the question for Michelle?
Can we track and she create, you said she can create a two, we just have to create two accounts. Yeah, she can create an income line.
Yeah.
The question is what does expense lines go against her?
It would be, what do we repay to the parking company that we're getting on? Is that something we're not gonna pay?
Yeah, and those would be, and those would be under the parking expenses.
So, so why couldn't this fund build into that?
Be official.
It's probably less a Michelle question, a more a board question to determine what you want, what, how do you wanna use that money?
I don't want you to be any more specific than offset expenses relating to parking control in the code.
I mean, basically, as Dave says, it goes into a general fund and again, it's good spent. But if we wanna, if we wanna, you know, just designate what it's for, I would say just, you know, we have the income and we have.
So if we buy signs and they're five thousand dollars and we take eighteen hundred out of there, she can keep track of that, that'll, that'll.
Yes.
And that, and then we'll take the other, which is all parking related, out of the general fund.
There you go.
And that's it.
Yeah.
Good, really good. Okay, next one, um, J, unsafe structures. There was a paragraph in here about unsafe structures. We have a new chapter on unsafe structures. I'm suggesting that we just get rid of all the words on unsafe structure and refer to chapter one twenty-four.
Okay, where are you, Marie?
Um, on page seventy-five. Right, right above article VI.
There we go, okay.
Okay, and.
Ah, I did that the wrong way.
And it actually goes on to page, um, you still working on it?
Got it, done.
Yeah, great, great. And. So there, uh, one thirty four twenty-one went into detail about, um, building permits. And rather than to keep that additional detail in there, it seems to me that what we should do is refer information about building permits to chapter forty, building construction, which has significant detail about how many of this and what form of that and blah, 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 blah. Is that, it's fine?
Okay, so that goes.
Just trying to make us not duplicate stuff as much.
Yeah, I have a, I'll make a change.
And another situation on this, um, page, I don't know. Seventy-seven B variances.
Okay, so I see that you wrote add chapter one oh six four, but I don't see the.
Sorry, so it says that variances requires the, uh, approval from the zoning board of appeals and, and the issuance of the variances to vary or adapt the strict application of any of the requirements of this chapter, chapter forty-two or chapter one fourteen in the case of exceptionally irregular, narrow, shallow, or steep lots. It does not, chapter one oh six is a whole chapter on steep slopes.
So I'm, I'm seeing that you crossed out one oh six, steep slopes also applies. Um, and above that, your note says add chapter one oh six, but I don't see it in the text. Am I missing something?
Yeah, why isn't it there?
Okay, well, you wanted it in there, right?
I, I guess, where, where was it going?
Oops.
Okay. I'm gonna try to spell chapter a little differently that way.
Because my, my cursor moves. Chapter. One oh six four, that's what you wanted, right?
One oh six, comma.
So.
And then the parenthetical comes out.
Yeah, and then the parenthetical, thank you, yes. Now, this then leads us to the last sentence in this. No variance in the strict application of any provisions of this chapter, chapter forty-two or one fourteen, shall be granted by the zoning board of appeals unless it finds that. And then it lists the conditions. I don't think that the zoning board of appeals gets to interpret or provide variances for steep slopes. I think that is reserved for the planning board. I'm gonna have to go check that.
Okay, so that's a question for John.
Yeah, I, yeah, I have to, um, seventy-eight, seventy-seven, seventy-seven, thank you. Those variances. Um, and, and that goes on to, to chapter seventy-eight as well. Oh my goodness. Uh, penalties.
Complaints of, complaints of violations, is that what you want?
Yeah, one thirty dash, one thirty four dash thirty. Uh, so this, um, one thirty four dash thirty identify how to se- submit a complaint. And that is, is described in detail in chapter forty. So my recommendation is just to refer to chapter forty, not to repeat the rule. And then the same thing true with stopper orders and orders to remedy. That is described in detail in chapter forty. Look at this, I'm getting rid of holes.
We did it page this time. For others on all kinds of fun stuff.
I think that's it.
Okay.
All right.
So we got a few, a few adjustments to do.
Yeah. And so research forty-four is done. Yes.
Remind me, this, this one you're looking at for September.
Yes.
This is the first.
The seventh.
The first.
September seventh, right.
I'm looking for September seventh.
Just one thirty-four.
So we're finishing.
We need one more, uh, we just gonna make some adjustments, so we need one more, we need one more.
I may be able to handle it in emails.
Okay.
But, um, okay, if, if you don't have any emails, then we, we do that.
Sure.
So public hearing September seventh or just the one thirty-four?
I'm gonna try to see if I can get some additional ones in there. The ones that have very few changes, but the changes are district related. Zoning district related, so.
Would the process be the same? Is the process the same that we read?
I don't wanna read one thirty-four. For the second public hearing, which is August twelfth, yes. For the third public hearing, probably not. The description of the changes to chapter one thirty-four are at least five pages long now.
And you've got the best handle on it of anyone.
It's, you could read it, but you would put everybody to sleep.
Well, yeah, true, very true. Danger.
Like we had that concern today.
I'm sorry, if, if I put people to sleep.
We used to do this from Zoom so we could sleep and nobody would.
It was worth it though, wasn't it? Some people got a little nap.
Nobody knew who had pants on.
More refresh.
So other than, I guess, bills.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve badge number six one one two in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Public comment, or should we make her stay longer?
Couple of quick questions. Is, was the permit fee for STRs increased to five hundred?
Oh.
I didn't see it in the fee schedule anywhere.
It will be in the fee, did I, do I have it?
Oh, she's looking for that, another question.
Um, is chapter one hundred the final version of that up on the website?
No, no. I'll get it to Jeff tomorrow.
That's it.
Are you getting any questions?
Uh, yes, with the short-term rental, um, I couldn't make it on Tuesday, I was rightfully excited. Uh, just a question, um, when the pandemic hit, got off the pandemic hit, he gets suspended there, short-term rentals. Cold Spring, you know, we just didn't have, um, a handle on what to do in general about short-term rentals. So there was no, there's no code and everything else. Does the board have the ability, or does the mayor have the ability to just shut them down in any situation such as that?
Uh, I think yes.
I think it would be a board.
What's that? Yeah, the mayor would, would be a board. But you could cause, uh, yeah, you could definitely do it.
And, um, you know, it just surprised me because like. And, um, you know, it just surprised me because like, I, again, I don't have any issue really with short-term rentals. I use them when I travel, but I'm attached to one. And before the pandemic, I'm certain everything was booked because in March, that's basically also spring break. And I'm sure everything was pre-booked, right? But it was a revolving door. It was every three days, you know? There was a little bit of time where someone was there for two weeks, but generally it was new all the time. And, you know, our park got closed, my kid couldn't go to school. And, uh, you know, so it was an issue and it was surprising because he can ride a lake cam and shut them down. So I think with any, any code that is formalized, uh, or that is formalized, that also gives the empowerment to the board to address the business community of the short-term rentals. And just to speak to Tweet's point, uh, trustee Tweet's, uh, point about forming, it wasn't time to form a committee. Respectfully, I disagree, um, because I also don't know how long you've lived here, but at least two years ago, there was a major public hearing on this. And even at that meeting, the question was, and it's still my question, where were all of the short-term renters, where, these business people, why didn't they proactively make a committee? Why didn't they proactively come forward to the village? As opposed to operating on, um, asking for forgiveness versus permission? This is a town where I have to talk to fifteen committees to change a window. But magically, my neighbor can just start a business in their house. It couldn't be a doctor's practice, it couldn't be the private speech pathology office, it couldn't be a hairdresser. So, the victimization that the landlords of the short-term renters, they're carping about, is their own missed opportunity. None of them wanted to deal with each other. If they were actually invested in making a viable short-term rental community here with the existing community, they would have been proactive. But instead, they will just operated on, I've got mine, uh, so famous party house mess, which, uh, on Mountain Avenue, which gets referred to, even though, you know, those are lovely people. There's a lovely family that lives there and they gave a shot at a short-term rental, it blew up in their faces. Everyone refers to that. So who did everyone go to? Not the committee for the short-term rentals, into the board. So, uh, if there was a vote to ratify permission of short-term rentals, I, genuinely, where does everyone think, you know, do, do people who run the short-term rentals, do they think they would win that vote? So, that push and pull is important and it's relevant. And I'm just glad it's being at least initiated and it can be molded. But, um, the concept that this is being enforced suddenly is because the people running these businesses have not done that themselves. So, that tension is important, you know what I mean? Because again, it can just be a complaint, I don't like it, I don't want it next to me, I don't like it as a concept. But pragmatically, pragmatically, the business owners of the short-term rentals, they punted the responsibility of how to manage that amongst the community to the board. So, that is their responsibility and they punted it. And so now we're in this situation, now we're in this situation. The board did not create this situation. So it, again, I am not against the short-term rentals as, in a reasonably regulated sense. Ideally, someone is living there or really close by, you know, to that situation, maybe attached. But, um, you know, the one I live next door to, which is the one Dave lives next door to, you know, who, you were the one who called the police. No, like twice, I think, right? Someone was vomiting all over the driveway in the middle of the day, that was fantastic. Who would have talked to them? Who do I call? Do I call the board? Do I call, you know, Airbnb, you know what I mean? Do I go online and complain to Airbnb, there was somebody vomiting? You know, no, I wind up calling somebody of the town. So, if the short-term renters want to have what they have, they need to like actually be part of the board, right? They, how come none of them have run for board? How come none of them have started a committee? And that's my only, I mean, I, I've repeated that statement, I guess, rambling a little bit, I am tired. It's been a long day. So, but, um, again, I just wanna say thank you to everybody for even trying to tackle it, right? If you make a per, there's no perfect way to do it. There's absolutely no perfect way to do it. There's always gonna be somebody upset. You know, there's always gonna be not enough, even if you make it super restrictive. So, it's something we're all trying to figure out. And, um, thank you and sorry.
Okay, I totally understand. Thanks.
You're boring today.
Uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, before you do that, Mike, ask the question about the fees for short-term rentals.
Oh.
There had been a suggestion Tuesday about to increase the fee. Right now, the fee is, an application fee is fifty dollars. The posted or unposted annual fee is two hundred and fifty dollars. And the one-time fee, the one-time rental, is a hundred dollars. Do we want to change that, is the question?
The suggestion I made on Tuesday was that we have, I know that you have looked at accounting to know that the charge meets the need, um-
It's my estimate, yes, that is just-
I would, I would love to, to look at and talk about the costs that are included. To make sure that we've, we're getting it right or close to right.
So, right now, the estimate is, um, an hour for an inspection. An hour to, an hour and a half.
But we don't need to do this tonight, right?
Oh, okay, well, as soon as we do this-
Because we'll be doing an iteration. We voted on this tonight already, right? And there is another iteration of the, the fee schedule.
Yes, yes, please.
So there's, now it goes to the-
Does that end your question?
I know everybody the other night-
Well enough.
Everybody the other night-
Not yet is the answer.
Recommended that we, we raise it, so I'm-
They also in prior meetings thought that our fees, our fines were too low and then we raised them. And then all of a sudden the backlash on that, it's like we're raising these two, so good luck making any sense of anyone. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you for coming.